Thirty-three. All the meetings at work, sorry to cut off story time, Mike. Uh. Right off the bat, do agenda review, anybody wanna move things around on the agenda or any thoughts on that? Hearing none, moving on to comments from the chair and the land use administrator, Ryan, if you have any comments? Also, I'd just like to touch real quick on where we left off at the last meeting. Finding out just where we sat with the interim bylaws and if we can do anything like that. I know that there's some stuff in the packet for um that you communicated with the LTC, Ryan. Can you just give us a quick overview on that and where we sit? And are we able to do anything with interim bylaws with the expired town plan or not?
Um, well, it's subject to the the interpretation of the BLCT person, we should probably talk to our attorneys, but. It is on the agenda to go over a draft that I put together, assuming people wanted to to move forward with that.
Uh, my reason for bringing that up now is if um where we have all the stuff of the town plan and we really need to get that done. If we're not able to do anything with intern bylaws or any type of modifications, then we should probably. Jump right into town plan readoption stuff with the town plan surveys. So we can get that done, so we can get the other things going. I do wanna pull the board, though, and see how they feel about this as well.
I think we're gonna get through the agenda as it is.
I would. Our.
Yeah, what I just downloaded this thing tonight. Um.
So you're saying there's discussion till it's time?
So if we uh, I'll feel like we can go through and work on interim bylaws. And not have our time wasted on it because we can't do anything. I'm finally doing that, but I just wanted to know how everybody felt about that still.
But I think what Ryan was saying is that he has a presentation for that and it's on the agenda.
And it sounds like we can do stuff. So it's. It's associated with plan is expires and municipality cannot amend its bylaws, including the changes required by the new law twenty-four of the SA.
We have an, we have an opinion that we're gonna hear on the agenda.
Yeah, right.
We wait until we get that.
Friday, you can come with that too?
Yeah, let's get to that.
Okay.
We get that category.
Okay, then we'll get on with it. Any comments from citizens regarding items not on the agenda? Thank you for coming out. To our very exciting meetings. Anybody online that has any comments?
I'll, I'll throw one in there just as, as a public notice that if you haven't seen it already from the fire departments that were basically in a burn van. No burning until further notice.
Every avenue that we can do to get that out is always good. Uh, approval of meeting minutes for August fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for August fourth, two thousand twenty-five with any corrections if needed?
I'll make that motion.
Brian has made the motion. Do we have a second?
Yep.
And Mike has second to that. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, moving to approve the minutes of August fourth, two thousand twenty-five. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay? And any abstentions? The minutes have passed. Thank you, Phil. Good job. Uh, item number six, discussions on duplexes and multifamily dwellings, right?
For this. Okay, so um Colin Oliver is here with us, came in the other day to ask about um a project that he is going um. Which would be for a duplex and wondering about if he could do multiple three bedroom. And so in looking through the bylaws, he's in the RR one residential one district um and. Residential multifamily and residential two fam- two families, so two, three, four and um and above is on the. Uses not prohibited. Uses not permitted list. Um, the duplex thing was amended by state statute in the home act. Um. Probably the, the first one in twenty twenty-three and then. Um, again in twenty twenty-four, there was two, two years where the home act came around, one was to clarify it. Um, but that basically said any time, anytime that you can have a single family dwelling, um. It needs to allow for a two-family dwelling as well. And so there are. Under the same home act, um multifamily was mandated in areas with sewer and water, so this doesn't apply to us. Um, but I wanted to just have kind of a preliminary discussion because of the two-family thing that needs change. And the multifamily that's also next to it in the, in the uses not permitted, um wanted to kind of. Get a, a feel about how um. How those uses should or shouldn't change in the future in the RR one district. So it's related to the, the housing chapter two um in the town plan, but sort of just a preliminary discussion about um. How, how the board sees these uses in the future, specifically this district.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Does having a, having a two-family. Unit means they can be the same size versus having a single family with an ADU, the ADU limits the size.
Right.
So if you have a, have a, have a. Residential unit, you can have an ADU. If you have two residential units, can each of them have an ADU?
No, the way that our, so we basically just have the minimum by state statute, which says any single-family residence is afforded the right to have an ADU. So that the state mandate of permitting ADUs only applies to single-family homes.
Could the ADU be a duplex? As long as it's smaller than the main hall?
I don't believe so. I should pull up the definition, but I'm pretty sure it, it specifically says a single dwelling unit.
Feel like the um. The parcel would be the biggest, you know, definer on that if it can support the sewage. And it has all the other requirements, you know, seems pretty straightforward.
But as it's currently written, we're only allowed duplex.
Um, yeah, not, not even in our bylaws. The state did overrule that and said if you have a single family, if, if, if single families are allowed, duplexes are allowed. Um, so currently ours don't say that. Um, but the multifamily isn't something that the state is.
But, but what you're saying is by statute, any single-family residential uh house could be split into a duplex.
Right.
But nothing beyond that. So the request was for a triplex?
Right.
Yeah, and our, and our uh current bylaws only allow single-family, but because of the state mandate. You can do a duplex, but not a triplex.
Mm-hmm. And so I guess where, where I'm coming from is when we talk about our housing chapter and where we want to try and achieve more housing, we talk about. Um, PUDs and we talk about ADUs, those are kind of the things we've talked about so far. But I wanted to just run it by the board and see how they thought about the RR one district and whether or not multifamily dwellings are appropriate for that.
This is an opportunity to. Maintain density, basically, rather than having three houses each on their own, because there's three units on one parcel. I mean, that's one of the ramifications is maintaining less driveways, less. Less. You know, access into, into. Wooded slash agricultural, whatever, you know, maintaining open space, open land, working land, keeping housing dense. That's one of the ramifications.
Move to the positive side.
Right, I agree, positive, freedom.
What if I'm able to solve this in the immediate future? Oh, sorry, you have something like that?
Don't speak out of turn.
Um, and see. So I, I, I stumbled over the triplex. Um, we allow a duplex. But not a triplex. Is it, is it triplex? If, if it's all in one building, isn't it like, like just three apartments?
Yeah, that's what it, what it would be.
And why would we not want that?
I don't, I, I'm in favor of allowing it. But it's current, it's currently listed as prohibited.
But because of the state statute, we have to grant a duplex, a suite plus. If I'm understanding what you're saying, Ryan, not having any background or done any research, but just listening to what you just stated.
Well, so I think historically, um, there was some opposition to the idea of duplexes and triplexes in what might traditionally be thought of as a single-family home. Type district. Um. In, in Windsor and Rockingham, there's a lot more of this two-family, three- and four-family type um. Of buildings and um it, it's kind of because it's that more urban environment, they're big. Buildings that are, are old and they're, they're just, it's more common there. Um, the populations are that much higher. We don't really have very many of them.
So, so if somebody comes in and wants to put in a, an apartment building on a. One, two, or three acre residential lot. Are we seeing now?
In the RR one district, yeah, we are seeing. And probably other, probably other districts too.
It was permitting the Dulles District, though, right?
Um, I believe so, you know, I, I'll give you a rundown on what, what they're allowing.
Because it's early, our bylaw says single-family, but the state overrules us and says we would have to prove a.
And that's.
What does that do, what, what does that do to our PUDs? What is it?
Did you do it?
Well, I. What does it do to our PUD? Well, I think it makes for more opportunity. Than a PUD, so if you did a. Understanding that a PUD is kind of like spot zoning and that we, you, you kind of get to rewrite the zoning laws for that unit that. I think a PUD allows somebody, but I think we still have to follow the. And again, I'm not really prepared tonight to really think about, but just off the top of my head, I would say that the PUD came in and, and an applicant said. Um, you know, I wanna put five duplexes and the reason why I think I could do that, I mean, one is because the state is overruled. Our bylaw that says we can only have a single-family house, but if the state says we can have duplexes, then I would think in a, a PUD. You could have duplexes. Instead of five singles, you could have ten doubles or five, five units that are two. And it might not be on ten acres of land. And it might not be on ten acres of land, which is what we're trying, what we've been talking about for like a long time.
Yes. So the habitat for humanity one, they wanted a triplex, two duplexes and a single and a multifamily or a triplex is allowed in the village. It's not allowed in rural residential ones, probably three, probably.
So are you suggesting that that's something we should be changing?
Um, I, I don't know necessarily. I think it's worth, a conversation worth having, having, and I think that my initial impression is that it probably is appropriate to have to allow.
Well, I, I, I think your one acre zoning, your rural zoning, your one acre zoning is, is self-defined, that's density area.
Right.
That's the purpose of it, it's density. And I think the limiting factor is gonna be soils. I, I, I think. Receptive, that's what I'm trying to think of. So the only, the, the only area that I look at there where that becomes a problem for me would be like a. Like a housing development where. Like perhaps a PUD where somebody's gone in and they put single-family houses that are single-story. On like quarter acre lots or something like that and it's, you know, it's, it's the block, you know, and everybody has their third acre, half acre, whatever. You, 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 you might not wanna throw something like this in the middle of that. I, I don't know, but I don't know. You can make the other argument, though, Mike, you could say that that would, would, um, this may sound a little theoretical. But by the mixing of the housing types and the design of the housings, it adds more architectural interest to the development too. You know, so you end up with two-story buildings, one-story buildings. Yeah. One or may have, I mean, it could be a very interesting mix of buildings. True.
Well, I'm just, in the interpretation that's saying that uh. You have to allow duplexes. Is that, say, in any residential zone?
Any residential zone that allows for full-time single-family residents.
So it could be in the C-ten.
Mm-hmm. Right, yeah, C-ten now allows.
I mean, certainly.
Be in any zone, based on even any residential zone.
Right.
And certainly from a construction standpoint, it's a more efficient way of increasing your housing stock. I mean, you're thinking you're gonna have a. You know, I'm not the expert, you know, maybe someone in the audience could speak to that, but you know, if you build a three houses per building and fifteen hundred square feet is one side and fifteen is the other. What do you do? You have a couple extra bathrooms and. So, you know, from a, from a construction perspective, I imagine it's more cost-effective and it helps us with our housing. Needs that we've been discussing for months and months and months.
One thing I'm curious on is would these be rental units or individually owned?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we wouldn't necessarily regulate that.
Sam, where's that come?
Well, if we're, if they're gonna be like individually owned, kind of like condos are. Then is there a parcel that goes with it? Does the parcel itself just go to the sheet rock or where does that?
I would say condo, you, I, I said a condo unit's gonna be your PUD thing.
I think that's what you'd have to do in this too, if you wanna have two units in this one building under separate ownerships. You'd have to have some kind of condominium document. The separate ownership thing is, is, I think is a separate conversation than this one.
But if you're building a duplex or a triplex and have. Somebody that wants to like, I want one family that wants to buy this section, another family that wants to buy this section, so on, I think it's all connected in the same conversation. I mean, I even know of small apartment buildings up in the upper valley where you can buy apartments inside a building that has sixty apartments.
Um, I, I didn't go there on the conversation um that we're having, it didn't lead me there. You know, but I can see where it might be, you know, part of the discussion at some point.
So I think the um, the structure of how the taxes get paid, who owns the land and who owns the space within them is sort of internal for the ownership. Usually there'll be an individual or a business or something that comes in and buys the property, and if they want to sell in the apartment units on their own. I feel like most of the time those owners aren't gonna pay the land taxes on the properties, so there's probably some kind of structure or organization that they're sort of. Paying into for that.
But I've seen it the other way too, where there's a common wall and the, the line runs right down the common wall, we pay fifty percent of the taxes and.
And so if the parcel gets split, then yeah, that makes sense, PUD or subdivision. And.
It would have to be, if it's ownership, it has to be.
But the, and, and Joey, you're bringing this up is because if we're gonna change the rules, this is something we should consider.
Yeah.
Not that, cause current, like, we could say you can have a triplex and if you wanna sell off one, then too bad. Currently, if you wanna have a triplex.
Can't have it.
You can't have it.
Right.
So like. We got, you know, we're like, you know, I'm, I'm caught up now.
That's all I was thinking of, like, further down the road.
Right.
You know, if, once these are allowed.
Should we, should we make it, make, make it as possible to sell them, sell parts of, of the building? Yeah, okay, I'm caught up.
So that was generally what I wanted to just throw out there. The question had come into the office and I said if we could have a discussion about it. Um, at some point, once we're done with the town plan and going through the bylaws more thoroughly, I think this will come back around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But my initial impression when I saw it was like, the RR one district seems like the place to have higher density, allow for more, you know, residential type.
Yeah, if not more, certainly, which means that might rise to the top of the crop and. You know, getting dealt with.
Yeah, everything goes in line with our growth areas too that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, any other comments on that? Any comments from the public here?
I mean, I could say a couple things.
Sure.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, William, sir, sorry.
Yeah, right. That way the recording picks you up.
Oh, great. Um, my name's Oliver Owen, um, President, um, Williams Field, um. And yeah, so I guess my, you know, I'm just informally, my story was that I uh. I was looking to build a, a new home and um. Yeah, with room enough to include my, my mother or any other family member that, I mean, you know, I have some aging family members, I don't know, you know, hopefully all of us do and. With needing single, single-story access and, which is not a ton of housing for in the area, because when she went to go look, there was, there was nothing. She ended up with a. A much bigger place that she need, that she needed with, with a bathroom, only on the second story for, and um. And anyway, so it just wasn't feasible. And so um I found a, an opportunity where I could build a, a home for myself and for her. So I applied for a permit for a duplex and, which was great at the time, it seemed to make sense, but then I got to thinking about it. Uh. She didn't need as much room as I allocated to begin with, so the idea is to um. To uh, uh, break her two-story part of the duplex into, you know, to, you know, stacked apartments, because she really only, you know, has. You know, we just realized after the fact that we had overbuilt a little bit for the duplex. But so making a triplex for me as a, as a builder and the. Uh, uh, an owner is, is um a pretty practical way to solve a couple of problems with one, one solution. Uh, making the triplex is, is just like a. It's a lot more efficient to speak to the question of like construction efficiencies, like, because there's no comparison, like, like to. And my place happens to, i- in particular, happens to have the acreage and the soil to be able to take septic, so that's not an issue. But, you know, may, maybe, maybe does speak to rural residential being a good. Place to do it, like, because I know that the villages don't have a lot of, or spotty um water and sewer, like, though I don't know a lot of details about it. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it seems like there'd be a lot of benefits to me anyway. I mean, me personally, but like, of course, but like. I hadn't really considered it for everybody and I don't wanna be one of those people that's like, they can do a rule just for me, you know, but, but uh. Uh, now that I think of it, it, we, we are needing more housing and we, my family in particular does operate a small. Uh, a small farm, so would give us an opportunity to house uh farm workers in the summertime at least. And um. And, and it, it had an apartment, so without taking any more time, that's just my. What was the, was there an original um request for, or did I miss the point?
Well, I was just asking about efficiency, I mean.
Yeah, efficiency, for sure.
I've been involved in the construction business for a while.
Yeah.
You know, not in that particular sense, so I just imagine that the building in a box, whether it has three units or two units or five units in it.
Yeah.
With the exception of some additional plumbing, wiring and meters, as long as you're able to segment and permit the septic.
Right. Yeah, it does, yeah, and for me. Uh, in my case, it's like my house, we have a structures up and it's, yeah, it's a little bit bigger than. Most single-family homes you're gonna see, but it's not like crazy, the footprint is nineteen hundred square feet. Um, but it's two stories, so, you know, my side gets, oh, and so it's, it's not really, I don't see it as three apartments, though it kind of is. But my side is like half the house and the apartments are uh each a quarter of the house in that case, so. It's like, I don't know, my place is big enough to be like a one-family home, but the apartments on um each, whatever they are, they're like nine hundred. Square feet each or something like that. Um. But yeah, it's way more efficient, you know, with the, you know, add a meter, you know, separate the wiring, you get. Uh, you know, if we encourage more building, we also encourage more um fire safety and compliance with the law. Uh. I mean, that's another point, it's worth learning, but.
Thank you.
Other comments from the board or citizens?
Um, just one thing, um, the rented versus own, that, that does, you know, have a pretty important. Uh, factor that is, that has to comply with the fire safety regulations if it's not owner occupied.
So you're gonna have to have firewalls and all that wonderful stuff like going through it.
Yeah, so.
Very low so I base free run.
Egress.
Yeah, but would, still be, even if you had a, 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 a. A condo where the ownership goes right down the middle, you still have to have that firewall between those two structures.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I don't know how that plays out in the, in the state's fire code. But typically the trigger for whether someone needs to meet it or not is if it's owner occupied. But I don't know all the new losses, whether it's owner occupied, but it's part of the condo, I don't know, so.
Couple of years ago, I ran into an issue with that on the condos up in Okemo and um. They all had firewalls going down through them until they got to the attic and then they were all wide open up there. And uh, let's just say it's really fun bringing, you know, a double-layered sheet rock wall up through an access port to put a firewall across the entire condo building that. Every single unit, um, anybody wants to, you know, let me know. But yeah, um, to my point though, was like, you have to make sure that everything's blocked off and wanna think about that beforehand when you're building these structures.
Um, not, I mean, it feels like we're moving on here, but I. Knowing that we haven't gone back and looked at, done any PUD language changes, is this a PUD kind of thing?
It was, it could be. I think the majority of three-family or more homes that I dealt with almost always were um not PUDs, they just. They almost always were pre-existing. Um.
In other towns?
In other towns, yeah, very small lots, they're on town sewer and water.
We don't have those types of structures in town, right?
Right.
Maybe one or two.
Mm-hmm. So yeah, I have not dealt with it for a PUD, other than I guess.
Right. So my, my question is more like, in theory, could Oliver apply for a PUD? And get anywhere, or is that?
Oh, right now.
Or is it like, this is dumping work, we need to re-revamp the rules before?
Yeah, I think it was pretty clearly just says multifamily is not allowed. As opposed, because it, the PUD can allow for multiple uh principal uses, but to argue that the same building has three single-family homes, where it also says. Three-family homes not allowed, out of park.
We gotta change that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta fix that. That don't make sense, because that shoots us in the foot on a couple of fronts.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for bringing this point up to us so we can get it.
Yeah.
Addressed sooner than later.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, moving on to item number seven, interim bylaw for the campground standards. Ryan, I see you have a couple emails in here going back and forth with uh VLTC on what's going on with that. Um. The general consensus was.
legit, well, so I, I wanted to read through it again to, if I was gonna give you a real overview, but basically, when I read through it, it sounded like there's a few nuanced points. Their interpretation is that um you could. You could amend a bylaw through the interim bylaw um process. Um. And it will require hearing, and that, that whole qualifier as to how, how an interim bylaw gets um dealt with. I wanted a little more clarification on. Um, I'm not sure I really got it, but. Um, ultimately, they said they think that it could be used this way in our circumstance with an expired town plan, but we should check with the attorney, so. I wanted to give you this and, and see what the board wanted to do with it.
She was pretty clear in the letter, the last paragraph that said, still go given the potential for different interpretations, it's all with the attorney before you do anything.
Sorry, so. So I haven't spent much time on it, but before bringing, I figured I'd just write something quick and just sort of try to put down what we had talked about um in a brief.
Make, for my own notification. We're, we're kind of working on an interim bylaw for the campground that, that where, where. There's decks and, and camper coverings. And, and. And that, so that's like an economic, the letter says like economic reason. Is there a reason where, where we would pursue that interim bylaw versus a triplex interim bylaw? Just.
Oh, I worry, I, I, that's why I said it's something that rises to the top. Maybe that's what we have to do.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we go to town plan, sit on the side, yeah, you're absolutely right, I agree.
I think a lot of times it's driven by who is interested and who shows up and wants to, you know, push the issue, so um. Where we had public involvement, I think, you know, that sort of lights fire under us a little bit. Um. So if someone wanted to pursue the, the three-family home thing and wanna make sure that we get through that, I think we could be amenable to it. Um, but there's capacity, so we had just talked about that one thing once.
Oh, I don't.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, it, it doesn't necessarily.
Need to add more work.
That's not necessarily the priority, other than someone came in and read, talked about, yeah.
So I, I kind of understand, you know, the, the whole interim bylaw, but what really kind of hangs me up on all of this. Is that it's meant to be used for an emergency manager to protect public health, safety and general welfare. And provide orderly and physical economic growth and. That, that's pretty straightforward on that, and I like the fact that we have a fast way of going through and do things, but if we overuse it. Then I feel like it shouldn't be our go-to for everything. We need to fix the actual bylaws. Not just throw band-aids on things.
Because it doesn't seem like an emergency situation, right, so.
Especially at a campground, as much as I'd love for those people to be able to have an awning or a deck out front.
Ah.
You know, um, I just, that's where I'm getting hung up on, it doesn't feel like an emergency.
Especially feeling the pressure of finishing the town.
Yeah, you know.
So then we can move on to all these other issues that we keep. So then we can move on to all these other issues that we keep bringing up. Looking at the town plan because we're all reading it saying, oh, there's, this needs to be fixed and that needs to be fixed, because I've been keeping a list of. Of bylaws we need to fix and the list is getting pretty long. So I, I almost feel the way Joe does that, all this other stuff is great, but let's just finish this damn town plan and get it done and then we can move on to. Little metered thing, and then we can do some of this other great part.
Yep. Thanks, cause most of the plan is done, we can fix things so we don't have to keep on throwing Band-Aids on her. So um. Do we even wanna go down to discussion on this or move straight on to um? Next item.
Um. While this is still hot in your oven, um, get a hold of, uh, I, I would talk to Brandon about contacting the town's attorney. And having them. Finish up on that, um, just so we know. Whether we use it this time or the next time, we'll know.
And we need to know.
We need to know. Yeah, and, and, and if you. I, I tend to agree with you as we, as you look at. The, the language in the um. Intra bylaw for the, the, the general health and welfare of the town. Uh, I mean, the closest I could come is, okay, how is the town impacted, um, services in town impacted? But I don't know that that fits into that, that language.
No, it's, it'd have to fit into the economic part, which adding a deck at a campground, I.
It doesn't, because it's not expanding the campground.
It's an amenity to somebody who already is paying for that, so, you know, I agree, I'm just saying, that's, that's, it would have to fit into that, it doesn't feel like it does.
Well, it's not an emergency.
Well, but it's self-safety, welfare, economic. Both, I mean, it doesn't. Say the economic part, that's.
The only other, the only other stretch I can get to for, for safety and health and welfare of the town. Is any controversy, but I don't know that that rises to enough.
But babysitting, the daycare thing seemed more like a service to the town than, than. The decks of the campground.
That, and that was.
I think that this logic makes sense.
To me, that was emergency, because that was a business that was moving and me, and it takes care of kids.
Yeah, I think that.
They had kids enrolled, they needed a place to go.
Right.
Uh, that was definitely an issue.
Feel like the logic here means. So until we have a room full of people from a campground and pitchforks here, it's on emergency for.
Right.
I, I, for me, I would think that we should table this, the campground discussion and, and focus on getting through the uh, the town plan. And that might.
With the exception of getting the attorney's opinion.
Just in case we run into a situation where we really need to do something and I'm not standing here going, you don't know what to do.
Yes, exactly. Like having that official ruling will just do nothing but benefit us in the long run.
Yeah. All right, then I'll make a motion to table the campground discussion.
Second. All right, all in favor of tabling the campground discussion to, well. Actually, do we even need to table it, or do we just dismiss it for now? Is if we table it, we gotta pick a time to pick it back up.
I don't think we need to make a motion one way or another. We're just.
I, I just, let's amend the motion to say, let's take tables, town, the campground discussion until we hear. Uh, the opinion from the town attorney. So we know where we stand on the interim bylaws, and then we can decide what we want to do then.
Hey, so that was a motion to table until we hear back from the attorney made by Brian, or. Do you all seconding that?
I'll still second that.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. And any abstentions, the motion is passed. Moving on to the town plan survey and the feedback from it. We got a big piece of paper here with all sorts of things on it.
Yeah, hopefully you can zoom in on the iPad and it works. Um, Joe, I don't know if you have a feeling as to how you wanna go about it, or whether you wanna spend much time on it at all, I just wanted to put it in front of everyone since we hadn't talked about it since it. Wrapped up, um, and it's all related to how.
The members of the board had a chance to go over this and read it yet and take a look at it?
Yeah, I, I would, I thought there's some really great things, I was really um, interested to see that uh, under communication, front porch forum was mentioned. A whole bunch of times and um, an up-to-date website was mentioned, not very often, so. You know, so I.
Yeah, I also jumped out to me, it's apparent, it seems very important to me, to, to, to people, to me, to, through this. Seems like it's very important that we. As a town, do a little more to reach people where they are. Facebook, front porch forum. I was surprised how many people said an email, another email would make them. Happier, more email, hmm.
Ryan, could you just take this document and send it to all of us in a separate email so we have it? So as we're going through the town plan, we have it to kind of go back as a quick reference, at least of. You know, getting the outside opinion on it, I think it could help us in the process.
Sure. Would it be helpful to have it in Excel format?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I, I, that, that, it, yeah, I think, I think. I mean, I could go through and summarize it slightly to say like. Four out of ten people said Facebook and six out of ten people said front porch forum, because, you know, their individual comments are good, but. Having kind of a summary of just like.
So, you volunteering?
I, I mean, I don't mind, don't, I might go back, if I, if I have to say it again, I might go back, but. Especially in Excel. And.
Okay, I'll get that up.
Then, I was thinking it'd be a good tool for us to have as we're doing. All of our stuff. So moving on to item number nine, town plan re-adoption, section A, future land use map. And the regional land use map, or future land use map. So um, I asked Ryan to print out some maps as well, so we can have it here to kind of look in front of everything. Um, what we have here, the one with all the yellow on it is the current zoning that we have, the two thousand nineteen rendition. The one with the green and the yellow on it is two thousand seventeen, future land use update. And then we have uh, the mark land use, and then in our packet. We have the two thousand twenty-five future land use, which is the one that we've been working on, that has like the, the. Concentrated growth areas and stuff, I thought it'd be helpful to have all of this information in front of us while we're going through. And having a discussion on this.
So, Joe, a question for Ryan, Ryan, the packet, the first map is current land use map, twenty twenty-five. You know, s- same as this, or is it, or is this um, from region?
That's the, that's one, yeah, that's from regional, so that actually is the, is the same as the third map in the packet.
Awesome, okay, I thought so, but. Okay, got that, and then the question marks on here, like, if you just, I'll leave this one to you, did you add the onic nation?
Yeah, yeah. So I met with Jason and Aaron and the new G A S person over there um, at Mark. Last week and we went over their future land use map, um, as well as ours, and, and just sort of the town plan, the, their regional plan in general. Um, and so, it sounds to me like. You know, I had made kind of small, more nitpicky suggestions about like coloring and things like that, and they said that they're pretty. Strictly bound to what the state has told them on what's appropriate, because they want each town to be the same.
Of course.
But um, I think the big takeaway is that virtually the entire town is shown as um. Rural of some sort, and there's, there's a few different categories there, um, and. I'm not sure if I got a real straight answer about um, the regulatory implications of. The rural conservation. Category, it, it, at the beginning, I thought someone said kind of briefly that it might have. Um, the effect of excluding a lot of types of development if it's in the conserv- rural conservation district. Or category, as opposed to rural general or rural ag- agriculture and forestry. Um, so. That's still kind of up in the air, because it, it, they also s- kind of backtrack and said that's not necessarily the case, it might have implications with Act two fifty and. And other things, so. Either way, they weren't certain whether they should use the rural conservation category or not, um. But when you look at it, all of it, all of. Their map in the yellow, the blue and the green is considered rural, and then there's a couple of areas around Scotty and Perkinsville. Um, and then the airport, that's, that's another category that they have.
Right, so this is, this is a huge change, I have another question. So if the, is the state gonna impose rural conservation, or then supersede our zoning, is that what they're suggesting?
I didn't get a straight answer on that, it, it sounded like it might have some regulatory impact and then they said it doesn't, so.
It'd be nice to know.
Yeah, it sounded, it sounded a little uh.
But I think the, and the answer is much more simple, you know, a little common sense, rural conservation, C ten. But. Just keep the C ten. But I'm not sure that matches up to what we got.
Well, so, so what, I think what, what we came down to is. The, for personally, I think agr- lumping agriculture and forestry kind of does a disservice because. Then you're putting like up on us, on Mount Scotty where it's like, that's sort of the prime area that we wanna protect, like. Forestry is still being done there, that's what the, the state uses, um, or the state does some forestry on that. And there are private parcels that go up that way, some of them, which they show is agriculture and forestry, which is the blue. And some of them, for sure, they show is greens, the conservation, I didn't understand the distinction between those two, um, so. With them, if there is some kind of regulatory implication for conservation, I was like, might as well just show it all as rural agriculture and forestry. Um, because forestry could be practiced pretty much anywhere there, um. And then the next question with all the question marks is why are certain parcels not shown as agriculture and forestry, they're just shown as rural general? Um, they said something about uh. I think there's kind of a um, criteria, um. Some kind of rule-based system that they use for delineating which, which parcel gets what color. But a lot of the ones that I put a question mark on were twenty-five or thirty acres or more and. Therefore could be enrolled in the U B A program, it could be used for agriculture and forestry, so.
Yeah, if, if they are looking for our buy-in, we're certainly gonna know what rules they use to make the map, because it doesn't seem like it makes much sense. So I mean, I can understand that the regional planning commission is supposed to make a map of something, they don't know what the rules are for yet, that. That just is what it is. But we at least should. Should know why things are different colors.
Yeah.
I, I, I.
I mean, they should know that.
I think, I think this map looks closer to the one that was created, that went through the argument, of the last. Uh, zoning by law change, they got shot down. Um. Where the question had been asked of, of Jason, um, in planning commission meeting. Of. What is conservation and what land in our town? Should, should be listed as conservation. Based on what the definition of conservation is. And when he created that map, and, 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 and this was. You know, people were crying about, well, you say, it's not fair to say eighty percent of the town is in conservation, but when you looked at the map that we had. It looked like about eighty percent of the town was in conservation of some sort, um. Now, what if, when Jason redid the map, let me finish, when Jason re- redid that map based on our. He took a lot of that stuff out, because he only put in the stuff that belonged in conservation, which is what. Well, this one actually, it looks like it's a lot less than that even was. If, if, if you go, that would be the one that's in the town plan now.
Right, yeah, their definition of what conservation is, is very. Different, I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the same, like, if you ask Jason what's worth, um, you know. Being our zoning conservation district versus what the regional land use definition of rural conservation is, I think there's a difference there.
Well, I wasn't tying those two things together really quite yet, I was only looking at the, what we did before. And, and that was to look at the map and say, what should be in conservation, what does conservation mean, and what should be landed as in conservation? And, and when Jason did that, it took a, 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 quite a bit of land out of conservation, remember?
Yeah.
And. So, but.
And I think that's what you're saying on the other map that you have.
What, what the argument became, yeah, well, no, not really, cause that, that was, that was calling it out as rural. Um, and, and, and. Yeah. Future, is this the one from the, the, yeah, this is the one from the previous one, that's in the current town plan.
Right.
Right, yeah. As a future land you spent. Okay, then look at the land you spent compared to that. And it was almost all, almost all of this was up through here, it was all great.
Even like the zoning, the one with all that conservation.
Yeah, yeah, this yellow is all conservation right here, right, so again, you look at this map and you see eighty percent yellow. Right, that's all conservation. And now.
Let me, let me try, let me try to.
Yeah, okay, but don't interrupt, um. So then you go to uh, this map here and the green is now conservation. And now you go to the new one. And again, the dark green is conservation, this one's even less. This is what I'm trying to say. It's, it's the direction of flow, where we were, what got shot down, and where, and where they're headed now. I, I, I just wanted to point that out, um. Things that need to be in conservation and be conserved, need to be concerned, we also need to recognize that there are lots and lots of. Properties in this town that are in some sort of conservation easement, whether it's private or. Uh, e- e- that they deemed it that way, or they entered into land trust agreements. So there's, there's lots of that stuff, that we've got the overlays for that too, that we need to look at when we do all of this.
That's on our, on our current.
Because that's the, my, your exact rate, because I'm looking, I know there's, I see three parcels here. That I know are in the land trust, or not, but there's conservation. And I'm sure there's more, so how can we possibly do anything with this thing from planning if we don't have accurate information? Yeah, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say.
This is like. This is really nice, but it's not really helping us.
You know, like all the work that we've done personally on just. Everything with all of our overlays and stuff on this map here covers it a lot better than this one, and this one is like. It basically dissects and destroys Perkinsville as well compared to the two thousand seventeen map. Doesn't really show any kind of like improved areas for where you wanna have a targeted growth.
So like, I'm guessing the thing that, that bothers me the most is. Is we need a clear definition from them of what these categories are, because otherwise we're wasting our time here. And the other thing I guess I need to know is if the state's gonna mandate certain things, then.
Yeah, so that's, I, I didn't get an email from them today, but that, that was basically their follow-up with me, they're gonna send me copies of those things. The list of the definitions for each of those categories, um. And then in ex- explanation as to why some of them are agriculture and forestry and some of them are just rural general. Cause yeah, my impression looking at this map is it doesn't really show any kind of cohesive development plan.
Here's like, what's their intent with it also, though, like, what's the, like, what are they? What are they trying to show?
Um. I, I don't know.
It seems not to me, is that if regional. Doesn't have any idea of what these already preserved parcels are. Cause they're not shown on here preserved. Then obviously the state doesn't either.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not really a factor, that, that's not, yeah, they're not, they're, they're not trying to capture what is existing as much as. I think, I think they could probably get away with calling. All of the stuff as rural, you know, one, show it all as one color, and then we'd have a little bit to look at and say, okay, here's the villages and your designations. So we can nitpick those, we're not even talking about those right now, just because it's so jumbled, the rural aspect of it. Um, so they need, that needs to be simplified, I think it's pretty. I think what we kind of concluded was, we can probably go away from the rural conservation, just so none of that, because. All of it could be rural agriculture and forestry for the larger parcels, and then rural general for the smaller parcels. Um, I think that's sort of the direction that they. Were pivoting towards, um.
Well, well, what I, what I was gonna draw out is the fact that they did call this a draft, future land use draft. And with state, with the state information that they've been given, I think all they're trying to do is give us. The categories of land that exist in our town, now what do you want to do with it? You know, which, which, which would mean you can take some of the agricultural and forestry and conservation, which we always had before, right up through the middle here. And that's your seat, maybe you're gonna make it C ten. Right, but, or then maybe you make some of it R ten. Maybe it's a ru- there's a rural ten acre thing, I don't know, I don't think any of that's considered here, I think it's just. It's kind of just a plotting thing, almost like if we looked at a map that said, okay. It's kind of just a plotting thing, almost like if we looked at a map that said, okay. This is all agricultural stuff and the rest of the land is whatever you want it to be, you know, type things.
So I'm sorry, go ahead, you want to?
The. Is is are we looking at this now because they want feedback or because we asked them to send it to us?
Um I think because I wanted to relay my discussion with them to you all, because. Our maps don't necessarily align, I just wanted to sort of bring you up to speed with what they were doing and give feedback to, because I'm gonna go back to them with more information.
You're you're talking with them, you're like, this doesn't look good, so you're bringing it here so that we can all say this doesn't look good, you're supportive in that.
Yeah, exactly.
Great.
Two part.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. So I guess my following up on what you started to say was um. Maybe this is more of a guidance document than anything else.
Yes.
Yeah, but I just Scott, I was just a little scared when Ryan said that the state's designating certain things, you know what happens when the state designates? We get in trouble.
That's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to to deck up my.
But what I guess we don't understand is what what the states designated to mark is. Give the town this information so that they can identify the types of land that they have.
Right.
And then from there they can build their 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 land use plans, that's what I see.
And I think, I think Mike, but I think we're further along than they are.
Oh, we are.
Yeah, so this is like coming from behind and you're matching up to us, well, we we. We've already put a lot of work into this thing and then we're going, no, this this is not working for us.
I also want, I also I also want to remind you that this map here, this future land use map. Was proposed for adoption in the last set of bylaws, they were shot down in the hearings. Don't forget that.
Good, so Ryan, would it be beneficial to go through on our twenty twenty five future land use map that we've done? And change the colors to match their colors and do, no?
No, no, I don't really wanna match that, but um where I I think we do need to kind of. Align our things is and and I've kind of done that in the land use chapter is our categories um could be translated to the words that the state is telling them that they need to use.
I like it. If we use the words, that's the way to walk around this.
I yeah, I think we.
Trying to. I think and so my one of my questions was, does it have to snap to parcel lines, because that's how they have it, um they said the the. Right, the requirement from the state was it um. It it should but doesn't have to, like they should try to make it snap to parcel lines as best as they can, so what I did was basically draw. Um if you look at a Scutney and Little Scutney, I basically drew what we had for a line, which was just a broad swooping line. And tried to snap it to parcels and be a little bit more um.
The black line is.
Yeah, I I tried to be a little bit more intentional about what's on which side, because it's just such a jumbled mess of the different categories.
I know, we ran into that before where when we were doing subdivisions, you have. Part of it in C ten, the other part of the highway.
Yeah, that's where you're making it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it is for the most part, except for like some of the big ones that got cut in half of their way up on the mountain.
Yeah.
You know, outside of that, Mike, basically what I'm gonna suggest is everything. Uh speaking just about Little Scutney and Mount Scutney area, everything north of the black line I drew would be rural agriculture, forestry. And everything to south of it would be rural general um. And then if they feel like they need to show uh the agriculture, forestry and other areas, they it sounded like they were going on a. Acreage limitation, which I think is okay um. But it needs to it needs to line up, because there's parcels that are a hundred acres here that aren't shown as that and there are parcels that are twenty percent.
They are, so we need to know what they were using to make this and and.
And and I didn't get solid answers too, because the 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 new JS person had just started the week before and didn't make this map, so um we'll. So we'll wait a minute, it's going.
Thank you for bringing us up to date.
Yeah, so.
I also I also think that uh the next time we talk about these maps, someone from Merck I'll be here talking about this. To to you know, so so the year now on the spot, trying to. You're trying to fill in their words, let them speak for themselves.
Yeah, sure.
And they should also hear our um guests.
I mean, this might not be the map that they were hoping would get shared with us also, right?
It may.
So they might say, well, actually, let me. Yeah, it's better to get in the beginning, you know, um.
But can I just um with the the future land use map that we're proposing, we go over that real quick, I mean, just a couple of changes I wanna run by. Um and then part of the discussion was um where we had shown growth areas outside of the villages. Um Jason was like, that doesn't necessarily align with the with what our regional plan says. And what the state flaming goal is of development, you know, focused in the villages and so um. On on a couple of those, I think that's okay, we can like um. Down towards the bow, um there's Bow and Hill Road, there's a couple of little areas that I showed as growth areas and. There's so much of it is terminology, and so I said growth area as in that's a place where there aren't. Prohibiting factors where there are already roads, it's not gonna um impact the forest uh blocks. Um where development is sort of practical. Um not necessarily saying that we really need to uh increase density and drop minimum lot sizes and things like that. Um but I think the terminology, where where I said growth area, that that sort of got them on highlight um.
Were they referring to like the areas that you have as growth areas or the areas that are already established neighborhoods?
The growth areas. Um.
So change the name.
Yeah, so I can change that name um or I could just not show it, um I think even if it was just white. It that still shows up as exactly what um.
Well, they have a category for planned growth area, so why can't we?
Well, yeah.
Something is a planned.
They have a very specific definition and none of these would fit into that. Um I think their planned growth areas are like directly adjacent to a downtown or something like that.
So. Do we call it our town still? Do we call them neighborhoods still?
Yeah, so on our maps.
Well, on our maps and then if we decide to change. Uh to to allow for. Growth in neighborhoods, then we could, then we wouldn't be saying, here's a growth area where we want growth and you say, here's a neighbor, right, where it's acceptable to have a triplex. Well, actually, Hank, to your point, though, I'm gonna bang a drum that I bang all the time, hamlets, and before anybody else goes on that, we actually do have hamlet. Zoned in this town right now as two thousand nineteen, there's one up in. Um by Downers right next to the highway commercial zone, and then there's another one down in the bow, right along Route Five. They're there, they're on the map, we just need to incorporate our neighborhoods into hamlets. We already have.
If it's not a definition, we stay tunnel, just call it, we just follow their words.
Yeah, exactly, it's a change the word for like, okay, here's our neighborhoods, we already have these things, they are hamlets. And I was actually really surprised when I saw that on there, I'm like, I didn't think we had those still, but there they are, clearly labeled. And if anybody wants to see on the map, I got some bigger versions in here.
So I think the difference with the hamlet is the the way that it talks about its purpose anyways, that's kind of a historical designation, the way that. Um Perkinsville had its residence area and industry, those other hamlets also had kind of their own industry and their own little community when everything was.
But the neighborhoods have their own little communities.
They do in a neighborhood sense, but not necessarily in industrial sense, and I think that that's sort of the origin of the hamlet. District is that it was it was that way.
Isn't part of our town plan. The idea that people do wanna see some business spread around inappropriate places around town?
Like you mean home based businesses?
Yeah.
And so in favor of calling neighborhoods hamlets and.
I mean, I I'm just curious.
More industrious.
I don't know, yeah, industrious, maybe not.
I don't understand why we're calling it local zoning anymore.
Okay.
So. Anyway, I think the 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 other change that I did was the village edge. And I wanted to get your thoughts and feedback on that, because if you zoom in on, let's say, a Scutney, what's shown in solid red. Is our designated village center, which is one of those state designations, um but in practice or. Uh in reality, the village is much broader than that.
Mm-hmm.
Um and so I drew this line um. Basically using the the highway as a um a border uh border and then it extends a little bit beyond the highway interchange to include some of those commercial.
Yep.
Businesses.
Yep.
Um but I felt like it was important to include the Tenny Hill area um as part of that village. Because they're all within walking distance of the center and those businesses.
As opposed to what you're coming back, it used to come right back along one thirty one all the way over to the river.
Right.
Again, like very narrow, so yeah, I like that.
And then I think it it sort of broadens the conversation about the resources that the village has, like. If you zoom in on the Scutney a little bit, there's three distinct kind of residential areas. There's a couple of different commercial areas and they're all they're all sort of split up um and it might broaden how we think about. Connectivity and um yeah, what's what's existing there. It includes the the industrial area um. The farm that has a farm stand, people can walk to that if they. They could walk through it. So anyway, that's that's a scutney and then Perkinsville um I brought in to include um. Basically, I forget the name of the road that's just just north of the bridge coming out of Perkinsville. Basically, people who lived on that road, I I feel like would be easily able to walk into Perkinsville across the bridge. Beyond that, it becomes a little bit more of a long walk down around six. So that's where I drew the line on that side, includes that little neighborhood.
What about the, there's like a, there's like a parcel in the top left corner that's pretty big, why why that, why did you put that one in?
Um only because the there's a residence at the end of that road, there's two residents at the end of that road and I was just including the parcel as a whole. Um I could have split it, but um I think the part of the reason I wanted to draw the line in the first place was was. Uh going through Jason's comments on the land use chapter, um I started writing something about. The number of parcels in the village and how much of them are residential, how much are commercial, so I wanted to kind of define how many parcels that were.
The parcel lines have changed since whenever this map was printed versus your future map. So.
The future map is of the.
No, I think the old one must be probably the you're using them for whatever the newest versus this one, which I had.
The zoning map, oh yeah.
Is probably old.
Yeah.
The seventeen. That's why I wondered, but now that on yours, I can zoom in and I can see those two numbers.
Yeah.
It just looks like.
I see, I see.
Yeah, it's an interesting.
Right, yeah.
I see a problem my lot on you.
Okay, on the future land use map.
Future land use. Yes.
On ours or regional?
Right here, I'll show you. That line right there, right there. That line right there, right there, this parcel goes all the way across and actually probably, now we see. Yeah.
It might be like different parcels, like the one over shape, well, it could be um that that when it gets converted to a PDF.
You're up here, you're right.
I'm right here, there.
Oh, you're right there.
That's that's, yeah, see, that's why I was saying that line isn't, I was thinking, because that's a lot like my property there. But no, listen, that's me there.
Yeah, there there probably are problems with the tax map anyway, um and we're actually going to a new JS program and. That would be a good time for public service announcement, anyone who knows of the issue.
I know you guys aren't seeing this, but I'm showing right, these are listed as growth areas and this is a scutney. Even though the interstate splits it and I know that this is all up the hill.
Mm-hmm.
Why not just make all of that?
So Mike's asking about the area west of the interstate, um basically the land around Thrasher Road and one thirty one, basically including Victory Land and all of that. Um and that's that's also where my head went was like, uh that all could be considered. Sort of part of the greater village area.
Of a scutney.
Yeah.
Well, because then we're looking at village versus the village center and then we could just very simply.
Well, the village, the village center is down right there.
Yeah, a little red. I like the way it's drawn now, because the other two spots, they're close, but they're not um. Seems like a like. They seem disconnected, I mean, Thrasher, there's a fair amount of Thrasher Road along there until you get to Victory Land.
The other thing that's, it is sort of, it fits with that other district, the more rural residential or even rural residential reserve, just sort of, it's not.
But that doesn't mean it can't be part of the village.
Yeah.
It's just a residential part, uh extension of the village as well.
I mean, I would think the going is supposed to apply sort of denser populations, so. Well, the neighborhood thing, like. The neighborhood thing might increase the density around Victory Drive, I mean, I can be where Mike's coming from, it just feels a little far away.
The I think the main, the main reason I didn't draw it that way was because I was thinking of it as people being able to walk into into the village to get those services.
Uh uh they they all could, but.
Another thing I wanna throw out is forty, sixty, eighty years from now. If you, that's what we're here to consider, not now necessarily, um in a finite sense. What what's development of the future look like?
Well, that's what we're trying to plan that for. Seven years. Where's your crystal ball? We need it.
Hmm?
We need your crystal ball.
My crystal ball?
No, I don't know.
I mean, it's logical to assume that between the pink area, the two pink areas to the west. Of the state of the of your red line, Ryan, if we talk about forty to sixty years, we all know what's gonna happen to them, it's basically, it's gonna get infilled. Unless topography or soils prevents it, it's just because it's. It's just part of that whole area that seems to kind of it's gonna morph together, because I'll bet if you looked at this fifty years ago, we didn't have those. Those pink areas onto the west of the village probably didn't exist, so they're very in one C twences.
Fifty years ago, the interstate was a magic wall, this cut everything off, now it's easy enough to get onto the other side of.
Yeah, so I I think that, or if you look at the forty to sixty year program, that that whole area, we could take Ryan's red line. And just include that whole thing and done, now I'm sure regional is not gonna like that idea.
What's the and and what's the what's the the ramification of the red line is suggesting that we. Uh because the future land use map, we change zoning to be whatever the village zoning is.
Right.
Increase the. Well, yeah, no, it wouldn't necessarily have to change the zoning map inherently, and and the village district doesn't necessarily have to apply to this whole area. I mean, we need to define those terms, if we're gonna call it the village area or like.
What's the red line for?
Um was kind of to delineate uh. Well, it's to delineate the village, but not necessarily the village district.
Yeah.
So that is the village in terms of like in a more practical sense. It includes residential, commercial, all those kind of things, all within walking sort of distance.
Would that kind of go back to what the regional map shows, transitional and infill areas? Almost like this is where it's gonna be expanding into for stuff like that, or is that along along the commercial lines?
That house right there. The hill block, so.
No, no, not the security system, because if we're gonna have this, I think it along the lines, if you said switching over the terminology, we might as well be honest to start.
Oh, windows.
Because if we're gonna have this, I think it along the lines, if you said switching over the terminology, we might as well be honest to start. Be honest with that.
I think, I think what what's shown, we have red lines, the the regional future land use map would probably have a few different categories within it as well. Uh as we as we do here too. I mean, so the other thing is that this map doesn't necessarily lay out. Land use categories, at least not the way that we talked about it in the in the text, because I talked about them as there's preservation, conservation and development. Um and this shows a lot more granularity than than that, so there could be a map that sort of simplifies this whole thing and just shows. You know, the small preservation pockets, the small development pockets and then the larger, I guess. I thought about that earlier, it's it would be kind of hard to delineate the housing separate from the rural space. Um I guess it would just be sort of the forest blocks that we show.
It would also. The on that, one, if you if you did this extension out here. Our current zoning calls that a village district, which is a multi-use, turns that whole thing into commercial. Multi uh or farm.
Yeah, only if we change the zoning map, though.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Actually, that's what I mean.
So I think the showing, the purpose of showing the village um boundaries. Um is not to say that that's all gonna become this is the village district.
What I was gonna say is, you could still make that all a village, but now you've got to separate into two different types of village zoning. Because hamlets down in here is your your compact multi-use, this over here would still stay. As it is for the white, right? The white is rural, residential. You you wouldn't want this out here to become this here, right? I mean, maybe.
Well, I like and I like Ryan says, he calls. Created this neighborhood term, which I have come around to really liking, so rather than drawing the red line there. You could say, here's the village and here's this neighborhood, Victory Drive, Victory, like that's. And and the purple blocks south of that is a lot less dense, yet.
Yeah.
It fits the criteria of like. It fits the criteria of like, potentially, there could be some more stuff going on here. Um, I don't know, I I. I think we're agreeing somewhat, like, is it a red line or a pink blob?
Yep. It's like to Ryan's point, it's a whole state, regional. Look at a village, they they're trying to put all of the development in a village. But if they can minimize infrastructure, then. Make it efficient from that state, then. So having it expand like that goes.
Goes against what.
Goes against what they're willing.
But they don't, they don't remember, but they don't understand that we don't have the soils to promote.
Right.
And we don't have sewers.
Right.
If we had sewer and water, this would be a completely different perspective.
And just the density that they're talking about, this is on a different level. Or the density that they want village centers is unachievable for us anywhere.
Yes.
And so our our high density is low density and they might be tolerable of that, we just need to sort of.
So I'm just gonna make it a suggestion that this area that we're discussing to the west of the village. Uh, your red line, you could call it a village neighborhood.
Why not just call it a neighborhood?
Well, but the family is more closely associated with the village, I don't know. Well, what I was saying that, maybe was that, you you know, you could go out into the thing there and pick one of those houses, if they've got a B O box, I bet you it's a scutney.
Well, scutney pretty much goes all the way to Weatherfield Center Road for the nail, right?
Yeah, pretty much. I don't, I don't know where it is, there's, there's a couple messes up there.
Well, and and so, I mean. I've already said that I think it shouldn't stay a neighborhood, but. The same, you know, why, why wouldn't Ryan draw the red line for Perkinsville down through Tendrick's Corners? There's three blobs down there, there's three big blobs down there, and there's a bunch of houses, right, like.
There's beavers.
It just. To me, it. A little bit of separation between. Stuff seems like an easier sell.
It's also called out for. In 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 earlier statute, I don't know if that's still in there or not, but. It's um, densely populated areas separated by.
Rural. So, I mean, neighborhood's not gonna be densely populated, neighborhood's gonna be like dense for us.
Yeah, I I.
I think that Ryan's point of like denser ability, denser state, denser races.
Even though when I was talking about, you know, expanding this and calling this all the village. It it took a minute for it to shine on me that this doesn't become village zoning, this is village zoning. This is, this is rural zoning, they're not. That's why I told you, village neighborhood, I would say, I mean, it is a distinction, it's, we can still associate it with the village of a scutney. But it's village neighborhood zoning, they'll call it whatever you want. And 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 this whole triangle just looks like the village to me, I'm sorry, that's it.
But that, there's a big chunk of not village in between, I don't know, it just seems. Anyway.
Now, to kind of just reiterate on this real quick, though, the terminology, I I like neighborhoods, I like our terms, but what terms are we going to end up having go with? Our terms or the terms that are coming through from Martin?
Regional hasn't said that we have to use their terms when they've come down here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, I think.
That's the next question.
I can't, I don't like their terms, I don't.
This is a good map, we're, we should be sticking with this until we, somebody said otherwise.
Now, along that thought pattern, we go through it, we get it all done, we have it, perfect. And they're like, nah, you gotta change it all over to us, what right or what grounds do we have then to be like, no. This is our town, we set this up.
Call that the hypocrisy that exists between the state and federal government.
But, no, in reality, though, like.
What's that?
State every year takes more than local land use.
Well, that's why I said, it's starting to not look like local. Anymore.
Should this be something that's written into the town plan somewhere along the line?
Don't we regain our sovereignty over the state or not?
I laugh how you want.
I think we should cross that bridge when we come to it, I think we should.
We are getting way off topic.
Yeah, all right, what's now?
Ryan, I guess we posed more questions than provided options.
No, it was, it's good discussion, I think I have uh, some changes that I can go back and make to to both theirs and our maps. And define terms and make some changes on that.
And then, you're gonna invite them to the next presentation of their map?
Um, yeah, yeah, I'll let them make changes first. And then when they have a new draft, then we'll invite them.
Joe, fix it for him. Joe, to answer your question, what, well, what are we gonna do if they come and tell us that our stuff is no good and we gotta do their stuff?
We gotta do their stuff.
We probably have the most public input of any town in the state. With everything that we've gone through here. Um, we've got some pretty clear direction from our people, what they want, what they don't want, if if we do what our people want and. It doesn't match up with the state. Just take the fight to them. Are you suggesting pitchforks? A lot of them, talking about lawyers.
I think we should cross that bridge when we come to it. Let's see, it's like a future.
So that's all the discussion I think I I needed to have on. Company move on.
All right, moving on, natural scenic and historic resources chapter. Oh, by the way, thank you for all the work you have put in on this map, Ryan, it's. I like going through it, I think it's a valuable resource.
We should put in for uh, to send Ryan over to Paramount where you can smash old TVs. Is there a place where you can smash TVs and things? Yeah, I think there's one of those in Paramount, I mean, I'm not saying you need it, but you can wear it, but wait, you know, the little things.
Yeah, maybe that's something that someone should put in the grange or something.
Yeah, that's a nice.
You'd have our own business here.
I was thinking we should all chip in the same vehicle.
All right, moving on to natural scenic and historic resources chapter, Hank, this was your baby now, isn't it?
Yeah. Yes, so. I made my edits. There weren't any complaints, except that I forgot to add um. Way down at the bottom when we said uh. That you should dig in streams in the summer. Uh, where is that?
Line three thirty eight, oh.
Three thirty, I forgot to add. That we should talk to some stream permitting person.
Um, we said state permits may be required.
Oh, I did? Oh, good.
Yep.
Oh, good, hey.
We talked about.
Swear off my breath out. I woke up in the middle of the night. Thinking I forgot.
You just missed, you just forgot the word for.
I got a few notes, but I'll let everybody else go first.
Yes.
So we go first.
Well, Hank, you got all your notes right here on the comments, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, I I was hoping Ryan would just accept them all and we would move on.
Uh, Brian, you had some notes?
Yeah, the only on line three oh five.
I was right there too.
Um, about this, we, so I just met with the fire chief and the highway superintendent because of the driveway, trying to work out the. Driveway things and we. We were gonna have a draft here in a week or so, but um, I think that that's a really good statement, it's more a positive comment than. Um, and then um. Now, on line. Let's see, good policy, oh, scenic vistas, I wasn't sure we were on that, I know. So we asked, we talked about it in a couple of weeks, go, Ryan, you know where the conservation commission is, or is that even gonna have an impact on this, we talked about.
For scenic resources?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I I wouldn't expect it for this, like, re-adoption.
All right, so then maybe we should take out, gather more specific data and photos for this re-adoption, worry about it later then.
What line?
Uh, five fifty eight. And just leave these the way they are, because Mike, if we keep waiting, if we keep waiting for this, we're never gonna get this done. So I would say, let's just leave it the way it is, because mine guess it's gonna take the rest of the year for the conservation commission to get that together, because that's a ton of work.
Yeah.
And that, though, we we could potentially put this scenic vistas as it is written in an appendix, which is then, I don't know if that's makes it easier.
To to amend?
Yeah, we can amend, that's just like putting a piece of paper, you know, switching, switching the amendment.
But for some reason, Ryan, you're more real crazy about doing a bunch of penises.
Um, yeah, when I started thinking about which information could come out, it was kind of like.
Maybe it's just as simple to shove it in.
I think we'd have to go through the amended process, I don't think.
Right, so it doesn't matter, so moving on.
Yeah, that was just a note, not necessarily.
So I was just gonna suggest that we just leave that all alone, just to move this thing on and.
Yeah.
And hopefully in a year, we have something that's that's worth going back and re-adopted. Um, and then I think. The same thing with historic sites, I think that's all, we will leave that alone and that's all my comments.
The only issue with the historic sites is we still have the listing of Dan Foster, obviously, from there. Oh, right. Since that's the head of the historic.
Yeah, and I'm still waiting to hear back from them, so they might not have had a meeting yet. Um. Did you change any of the the goals and policies and stuff, or were those already changed? There's a lot agreed, but I felt like I've seen that.
Yeah, I, um, and I just stumbled onto something myself, so you go ahead, let me know when you're done.
Uh, I kind of went into seven twenty two through seven twenty seven, I just don't like the wording of that.
What number is that true?
Uh, two point six, um, it's under natural scenic and historic resources, line seven twenty two through seven twenty seven. Specifically, uh, twenty five and twenty six, the policies as contained in this town plan are required for all projects undertaken within Weathersfield. Um, and I just, I don't like the way that that feeds, the the wording behind all of it. Can't really put my finger on it, but it just sticks out to me as like something's wrong in that paragraph.
Is there a list of policies in this chapter?
Yeah, I think it goes down the list on further on.
I think that's the opening paragraph to each um, goals, policies and objectives section.
Of this um, historic resources, but. That was originally recommendations, so why are we changing it to goals, policies and objectives, what, where are the policies for that?
Um. Yeah, I don't see any policies, on on the land use chapter, there's policies, and so that was just.
About paragraphs is generic to all the chapters, and it may or may not be a goal policy or an objective listed below.
Right, so there, so there are no policies laid out here, so we could, we could delete that, or um.
Well, if it's generic.
There was nothing that was relevant as a policy. Going through here. These are all objectives.
Then line seven sixty three, to pursue the scenic highway designation route for uh, destination for Route one thirty one. From the Cavendish Town Boundary to Golden Ridge Road. Um, that, again, like I brought for the last meeting, is a huge chunk. Of land that goes on that, and if that whole thing is gonna be deemed a scenic resource, that's gonna affect every single property owner along the road. That's gonna affect our future growth, that's gonna affect a lot, I think we should just strike that.
Yeah, that's, that's huge, what's, what's sitting there now is just a short section of one thirty one down.
Yeah, I, and the conversation in the last meeting was, we didn't know what scenic highway meant, and we were looking at that and probably.
Yeah, I think we should just remove it from that, cause in all our free time, I don't see us getting to that. But also just the huge swath of land that is, the. Brandios impact that would have on the town, yeah, there's a really good views and vistas throughout there for sure, but um. To take that whole section and put it into a scenic reserve, that's gonna put a bigger wall through the town than the interstate did.
But my challenge is, I don't know what that means.
Right.
I I don't know, what does that mean, what does that mean, absolutely no development, but does that mean you can build a single plane, like, how, I have no idea what the implications is.
So, if we look at. You know, how we have the historic and the scenic areas now, we don't have things that, you know, you can build it, but it has to be screened away, it has to be hidden. They can't affect the view, you can't have a big cell tower, things like that. But that's where we are right now, but with some, we don't have any area that is that big.
But my point is, I don't know what the definition of scenic highway, I don't know what the restrictions are. It could be exactly what you're saying, we can't do anything, or it could be a list of, a menu list of optional things, I don't know what that is. But I I I don't have any problems with taking it out, with the goal of getting this done, and then we can always. Modify this down the road once, or the other way to look at this is, that some of these um. Um, scenic areas are included under the scenic views.
Right, and then just kind of narrow it down to stuff like that, instead of just being like, here, this huge swath is.
Yeah, I don't, again, I'm.
I'm just thinking of the unintended consequences, to steal Mike's phrase.
If I, I could feel more comfortable if I knew what scenic highway designation really does or best of due for.
Yeah.
Like, that's mine.
I mean, to pursue doesn't mean you'll adopt.
Correct, so we could, but we have it. But that would be something that would be deemed to go up and to look into and work on, but. Um, my vote is to strike that hole out of there. How's the rest of the board feeling then?
It looks a lot like it's a sort of a tourist thing. I don't want to probably strike you.
Or at least limiting it, like, um, if you wanted to do an area that was really scenic, get along, you know, one thirty one, I would consider maybe from the Cavendish. Line up to Gridlock Road, that's more suiting for that, there's not any development out there already.
Yeah, I, to me, it almost seems like we should include it under the scenic views. Well, that, and that sort of captures that.
My concern, you know, plan standpoint is that scenic views that we're putting in there were designed initially. To stop development like solar fields, and cell towers and things like that. And if we start listing a three mile section of highway, the state soon as can throw it out.
Well, I'm not saying you listen all, all, all highway now, I'm just thinking parts of that, maybe scenic views, you know, where there's a certain turn in the road. Plus, the other thing to think about is if you, if you look at that quarter, that's all pretty much really steep slope areas anyway. So the chance of a lot of that being developed was probably could blow, but again, I don't know that.
It's from a quick search, it seems like enrollment in either a state or federal scenic highway program. Um, the, the extent of regulatory implications are pretty much on billboards. It basically says not as restrictive as a billboard ban under federal law for mine, um, ensures consistent. Regulated signage, so it seems like signage is really what's affected by that. Um, and then it says something about the design standards of the road, when the road has to be reconstructed to be done, so it's such a.
Well, I guess we're, I'm kind of hung up though, it's being listed under the natural scenic and historic resources area. Which is specifically kind of pointed to the areas that are being protected in net, the you shall not infringe. Area, and that, that's where my worry is of just of that huge section of land, again, we don't have a clear definition on it, but. I would hate to take a huge section that goes across most of the town and say you can't do anything on it. Without us realizing that that's what is happening.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into what are the regulatory.
Wasn't there a current language in town plan on this, from Golden Ridge on one thirty one? It it wasn't that long of a section, it was just a short section down here somewhere.
This language was um, straight from the last one.
Yeah, that's.
That is?
Yeah.
From the Cavendish boundary all the way to Golden Ridge.
I think that was in the last town plan.
I think we could look into this, I think we're probably gonna find it's a tourist thing, like scenic, scenic road, drive along a scenic road between your Maple Creamy and your. Titerdona, and that's not a bad thing for us to have, I guess, I mean, I don't know if it. I don't know how relevant it is.
So just to move this forward, if we get Ryan to look into this definition, so we all, I, our degree of confidence, whether we wanna do this or not, cause I'm on the fence for it.
And and if we, and if, and if, I mean, we could just leave it in, if we looked into it and found that it was very restricted, we would all likely choose not to do that.
I just don't wanna go through adopting anything, waiting to hear her an answer, and it gets lost when we have something as potentially large as that. That's my only point of concern.
All right, so I'll find an answer to that, and then we can rehash it next time, see what we wanted to.
Exactly, yeah.
Because to your point, Joe, um, I almost think that, from a couple of sentences, we agree there. You know. Whose job is it to surprise the. Need, owners need to be surprised as a significant restriction of regulations go along with doing this, but we don't know what the restrictions, regulations are.
Yeah.
So maybe that whole sentence doesn't even need to be in there.
Well, everything, at least related to zoning, it sounds, everything that I've been um. All, all the information that I've come across is that enrollment on the national or state historic register for historic places has no zoning. Implications.
Right. It's just a designation.
Right, well, it becomes a real barrier to do renovations on, too, but.
Does it, I don't, I don't think it does.
If you got a, if you got a historic.
Maybe it becomes ineligible if you, if you do it.
I know you have to maintain certain standards. I know you have to maintain certain standards and all sorts of stuff, I went through this on a couple renovations before. There's a lot of red tape that's involved.
If you wanna maintain that status or, or you have to maintain period status once it's on.
Once it's on there, you have to maintain it. At a certain level of. Yes, to retain the status.
I mean, you could take it off by a status and let's do whatever you want.
Yeah, is it easy to lose the status?
To retain the status, you're right, you have to work with certain parameters and.
I think we need to look at that too, just to be sure we understand what we're doing. But, are we still talking about one thirty-one scenic?
No.
No, I moved my historic buildings my.
The, the one set is below it, and then my other one that I had, uh, was seven.
Maybe we need like the suggestion.
Ah, yeah.
Objective suggestion. For something like the, the historic buildings, it'd be great to have a bunch of those in town, that's really cool, but. But having it be an object, like a goal, and here's an objective, having it be an objective makes it, might, maybe that feels. Where, whereas as a, a suggestion, it would be a little less softer, yeah, a little softer. Now, that, maybe that's seven years from now, we, we think about that. So, anyway, you can uh, write this down.
I'm thinking about all the terms of the, the objective, the policy, the suggestion. Uh, I guess okay, I just, just like it's getting bogged down.
I agree, I think we should move on.
I had um, a couple more real quick ones here, line seven eighty-two, uh, underneath the Crown Point Road, six point three. Um, the hang from its structure and protection of landowner rights. I would like to keep protection of landowner rights because landowners need to have their rights protected.
Though I read the class four policy and it looks really good, so I don't think we need to say that there, cause we have a policy. For the road policy.
I disagree.
Alright.
And the reason I disagree is because I had a deal with a year ago, where landowners showed up on somebody's land. Prepared to cut path and clear, and, and clear the road through their property, uh, because it's, because it's a class four town road. And they had. They had no, they had no landowner permission to do it.
And they had, but the question is, are they gonna have? Reading the town plan, reading the class four, like neither of those documents would have helped, because they were gonna do what they were doing, not read, not go and read the document.
Well, I think removing that from the town plan makes it even worse, because at least now there's something in there to say, hey, it's referenced.
The reason that I would, that I would strike that is not that I don't think landowners should have rights, it's because. Everybody who has a class four road should have the same rights, and I think the. It just feels weird to put that in there rather than say like.
Well, okay, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, if, if all landowners on class four roads have the same rights. This is taking rights away from the people on Crown Point Road. This is. Yes, wait, read, read the next paragraph. Re- um, uh, restricting activities such as building construction, driveway, road construction, logging and other permanent alterations. I agree with permanent alterations, but there's places all over town where people are on, uh, either class four roads or, or, or uh. Uh, other types of rights away that, um, they use, they use it for logging. Or, or they may use it for access on their, on their property. We do, we have Crown Point Road, there's a significant chunk of the Crown Point Road to our property, and we use it for access to get in and back forth.
I didn't, yeah, I, nobody commented on that.
But, so I'm just, I'm, but I'm just saying that your, your comment that protecting. It's no different than other landowners' rights, well, this is making it different than landlord, other landowners' rights on other roads. Because you're not saying the same thing about those other roads, that you can't do this there.
Does the policy talk about special status roads?
No, I don't think so, I don't remember.
So that, I mean, that sentence doesn't really mean anything.
Never seen the old plan too.
The specials should designate as a special status road.
Let, let me, let me be clear about something, I have no problem with Cash Crown Point Road, people making it a trail or doing any of that. But before they go out and start cutting on somebody's property, they need to get permission, I understand it's a town right away. But this does reach across the line where we say this is a special thing. And all of a sudden, people are showing up on somebody's property, cutting.
If, if, you know, maybe we should be taking this part out.
Maybe. I, I, like I said, I have no problem with the Crown Point Road. But if you're gonna go out and cut on somebody else's land, go talk to the landowner first. And that, this messed that all up, that whole, that whole policy thing, it's in class four policies and, and stuff like this, messed that up. Because they took it as they had a right, it's now a class four road, belongs to the town and we can go out and do what we want.
So then.
Huh?
Did the class four road policy come out because of that?
Yes, it came out.
And now we have that.
Do you understand how this all took place?
I understand the timing that.
I'm right, I'll give it to you right now, the ancient roads policy is when the Crown Point Road was adopted, it was a class four road. They even wanted to take it to a trail, but a trail meant no, at that time, this may have changed, but at that time it meant no. Uh, motorized vehicle use at all. And so that was fought against, it got adopted to keep, to preserve its historic value. It got adopted as a class four, which I don't disagree with, but then years later. We have some language that appears from the select wording in policy on class four roads that. That gives people a right to go out and maintain this thing that are not the owners of the road. And that, that's, that actually is.
Had something that said that.
Read the class four road policy. It's in there.
And it, it says that it, they should be maintained by the road department.
No, it says they're supposed to, that he has.
Should have jurisdiction, that is.
None of that took place, it just went out and started cutting.
reel us back in for a second.
Problem there is that, that people went and did a thing, they didn't read the policy document, they would have to read this to see that, I mean. There's a difference between what's, I mean, we need to have the right policy so that the landowner can say, hey, look, you shouldn't be doing that. Here's the person we need to talk to, right, like the policy is, it does protect the landowner. And that's a good thing. Maybe, I mean, and, and, so I was reading this part and I was editing it.
Yeah.
I wasn't hacking at all. I mean, maybe we should remove more of what's there, do you okay?
Should I reference the class four policy in there?
What's that?
Should it reference the class four policy to make sure you're compliant with that?
I don't really agree with the class four policy as it was written to begin with, the, the, the part that deals with Crown Point Road, cause. It, it's specific, that Crown Point Road, and it's, it's, it's part of the, the crown of, um, um, class four road policy.
Now, where I was at with this, kind of just bringing back to my notes on it, was just leave protection of landowner rights in there. And walk away from it, Mike, if I'm hearing you correctly, you wanna take the whole six point three and bucket?
Well, well, I, I wasn't, but I was only refuting his point that, that, that that isn't anywhere else. Um, i- 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 his statement is, um, though we, um. We do not offer silly language in any other right of ways, the class four road policy document is fine. Uh, though it would have been better worded without mentioning specific right of way, and then his argument was that, um. That, 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 it, it, it changed landowner rights. On, uh, in some way on this road. But, but what I was saying is, yes, this next paragraph changes landowner rights on other class four roads, so. What are you doing?
The forest has their hands up. You're muted, the forest, thank you.
Hi, thanks, I just wanted to say that the highway policy on class four roads does make specific provisions. For maintenance of the Crown Point Road, the Crown Point Road was supposed to be redesignated as a trail. As soon as the ink was dry on the twenty-ten highway map, but it got bogged down, in the meantime. It is still a class four town highway. And the class four town highway policy does make specific provisions for maintaining. The Crown Point Road, but it's supposed to be in coordination with the highway department, the highway superintendent, that would be Ray. If you, if we are going to cut brush and the intent is to keep the high, the Crown Point Road. Still visible across the landscape, that's the only reason that we would be doing any kind of maintenance to it. So that people can still follow it, it is still a class four town highway with its fifty foot wide right of way and all of that. That in, that that entails. Um, at any rate, the class four town highway policy does specifically call out the Crown Point Road. And the minimal maintenance that it does require to keep it walkable by the community that does enjoy doing that. Thanks.
I can, uh, I disagree with a couple of statements that came out of that, number one, I was, uh, at all of those hearings. Um, during the ancient roads committee to forest and, uh. It was, it was definitely argued that we did not want that road to become a class four. I mean, as to, to become a, uh, um, a trail. And it, it, so I disagree that a- as soon as the ink dried, it was supposed to become a trail, I disagree with that. That, it was adopted as class four road, period, it was not adopted as a trail. Um, that would have, that would take further action, which never did take place. So it wasn't just a matter of when the ink dries, it's gonna change. Um, and secondly, uh, yeah, that policy that has been created in the, uh, class four roads policy to maintain. I agree with what you said, but I don't agree that that's what it should say, and yes. Ray should be involved in it, but so should every landowner, you're going on somebody else's land to maintain that class four road. In any other circumstance, again, back to a point you made, where there's a class four road on, on, on somebody's land. It's their responsibility if they wanna mean, okay, I, I think the town is only responsible for coverts, right? Or are they not even responsible for that? Class four roads.
Yeah.
It's a town road and the town's responsible for, for work on it, I mean, they meant. You know, if they're not gonna do it, I think still, somebody would have to go to Ray and say, hey, look, we wanna do this on the town.
And, and, and what I, what I eventually wanna see in here is that there's some kind of connection between Ray and landowner before anybody steps foot out there.
So, to kind of, to, to, to realist that for a second, and protection of homeowner or landowner rights. Kind of just means, oh, well, is there something else that we have to go on here, a, a simple, you know. Active sentence, takes care of that, but Brian, you didn't hear that.
Well, yeah, I wanted to ask the forest if there's still a Crown Point Road Association, cause that's what's the, the body that the, that the pol-. The policy specifically calls out. The forest, do you know?
Yes, the Crown Point Road Association still exists.
Okay, is that a town association or a state association?
No, it's an independent nonprofit organization, they are solely, um. Focused on, on the Crown Point Road as it crosses the entire state, not just in Weathersfield.
And they are residents of Vermont or New Hampshire or New York or where?
I can't answer that question, I don't know.
Because it's anyway. Um, again, so we're not, we're not just gonna allow anybody to go walking across somebody else's land. I mean, I mean, the, the, the point that was made to me was, it was never a problem until this happened. And now it's a problem, because they're just doing it, is instead of just walking the trail. You know, going where it's okay, now they're going out there and cutting it, and, you know, so people are ticked about that.
Does the protection of landowner rights solve this at this point enough in the town if I am?
Or, let's just leave it the way it was written and.
Oh, good.
Maybe, I also think that we could, it could, uh, I think it, it probably could get away specifically from being Crown Point Road. And the, that whole section could just, could be, uh, developed a little bit further to talk about how the town wants to maintain. All of its town, its trails and.
I hope I get to get their approval.
I mean, so, so this is in my head, because the, the conservation commission just did the inventory of class four roads and trails and things like that. Kind of in line with thinking, where, where are they, where do we know that they exist and where are they used already? Where they kind of been lost or haven't been followed or aren't being used very often, that's sort of the initial jumping off point. Yes.
I was just thinking about class four road, like, uh. The, the class four roads that I sometimes would walk on and I assume that I could just walk on them. So I guess it's the cutting, so that makes sense, yeah, I, I.
Right, so I think the, part of the question is, where are they, because we have some like shown. I, I think of one on Center Road, right at the southern end, it sort of cuts across, um, a hay field. Um, it's right basically on the corner of, um, West Hamville going south, you, you can't see it, it's just a field. Um, there's nothing really that defines it, and so, part of the question was, um, where do we know that the trail is? And exists and where is it being used currently, and then where has it been lost or never been, uh, maintained? So, so to know, like. Um, to start the question about what's, what's being used, what's the value to people, and where should they be connected to other places? And are there trails that, that really don't serve a lot of value that could be abandoned? Um, so, so I think the whole conversation about how the town thinks about townwide trails and roads. Walking, biking or horseback riding kind of recreational resources, that could all probably be, be, uh, brought into this. As opposed to just saying the Crown Point Road is this specific.
So, that's another part of the challenge from some of the people that exist on this Crown Point Road, is that the, the. Premelation never took place, that, and if it's here, it's here, it's over there, where is it?
Right.
Um, and, and that's a legal challenge that the town could lose, uh, uh, very easily. Rika, you were part of the, uh, old bowl road discussions a year ago, you know what I'm talking about when I, when I bring up the, uh. Uh, the layout of a road, how complicated it is, and, and the requirements go back into law into the eighteen hundreds. Of, of what is looked at, uh, by the court, when, when hearing the case regarding, um, the layout of a road. Where it exists, and, and we are in litigation on, on roads for some of that, so. It, it's not, it's, it's not simple.
I need to step on a landmine quite like I did that day. Be great.
So I'm just wondering, I think, like, or somebody said, maybe we eliminate. The Crown Point, we talk more generally about class four roads and keep it more generic and talk about property rights. And what the policy is for that, and kind of clean this up a little bit.
I think for the town plan, it's almost necessary.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, this is a bigger discussion. Because being a Crown Point Road person, because it runs across our significant portion of our property, I have more impact.
And, and class four road policy is select words, it's not here, it's not here.
So I think we should change this, if they're written in Crown Point, and make sort of a general class four road policy or objective and. And, and, well, we've done with this.
I don't even think we need to go that far at that point, because this is just pointing out natural scenic and historic resources, so you wanna take it out?
Well, we could say, yeah, because then if we're talking about class four roads, then, then we're talking about all of them, that.
It doesn't belong in the section.
Right, that's where I'm at.
Well, while though the Crown Island Road is a historic resource, that should be mentioned in this chapter in some fashion.
Right, from the perspective of it's a historic.
Rather than.
Yeah, than a recreational piece.
And that's really, like, that's more, it just feels, yeah.
So I had come up with some great ideas.
Oh, wow, yeah, I did my part, I think it's Ryan.
Ryan, you're just getting one up here.
I mean, somebody else already did it in protection of landowner rights.
Yeah, that's why I said ten minutes ago, we could just leave it the way it was and move on.
I didn't think we were gonna spiral like this.
Moving on.
Whoops. Uh, I'll, I'll think this is my last note here, I'm just curious on. Why section two point six point one, all of it is struck it out, should we keep that? That's lines eight oh three through eight thirteen.
That's sort of taken up another place.
Yeah, probably, if you're just, we're not talking about the biolos here, it's just, just the town plan, so.
But it's our guidance document.
Well, we talked about the biological nature areas of Weathersfield in a different, you know, we do talk about that somewhere, um.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think it's not, I think it's.
It was just more, more a point of curiosity.
I think, I think you got it from me with this.
Yeah, that was very crossed out, and I think it was crossed out, cause we moved away from saying what biolos and subdivisions we should be doing to saying goals and objectives and stuff.
Yeah.
We talked about that a long time ago.
So.
If it was something we already hashed out and dealt, um, I still remember, so. Right?
Um, yeah, so, the, that one on the biological natural areas sites will be shown on site plans, um. Oh, never mind, there's a different one about that.
Uh, it just feels like.
And so, oh, so that one specifically, it's already in there, that, that biolat subdivision regulation has already been changed. And so, oh, so that one specifically is already in there, that that biolat subdivision regulation has already been changed to say that. Those should be shown on site plans and sub.
So we already did all that.
That's already, but that was done, yeah, from the last one, um fragmentation. I have to assume that this is covered in another section, fragmentation.
Well, it's something we already covered, but we don't have to go down that too far. Anybody else have any input on anything to do with the natural scenic and historic resources chapter?
I'm writing something for you if you want, just we we, yeah.
Sure. Um so so on the fragmentation one, that is an objective, um. I guess objective or goal A, objective one. Uh we create biolos subdivision standards to ensure development will be signed, inciting locations, patterns and density. So I I think it was all cashed in, it was just sort of spread out into.
Okay, but if you have another thing or two to talk about, Mike's gonna.
I got one more.
Play on this for another thirty seconds or so, he's real close, I think.
Line three twenty-nine. Um where we add in water resources shall both include surface and or surface water and groundwater. Um and then the following sentence, the original part was all of Weathers res- uh Weathersfield's resource, then I can top. Uh all of Weathersfield's water resources are considered irreplaceable, why are we specifically calling out surface and groundwater? If we already are mentioning all of Weathersfield's water resources, it seems kind of redundant. Especially where at the end, they put in the state permits may be required for projects associated with water bodies and wetlands uh on three thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
I don't think I added that first time.
No, I think that was added in at some point during the original work on. It just kind of.
I think I think just sort of the natural interpretation of. Water resources probably surface water, like people think, okay, water resources, lakes, streams. And the the, yeah, the um. The groundwater is not necessarily as intuitive, so by saying it's it's surface and groundwater. And all of the resources are considered irreplaceable, so don't don't get caught up thinking it's just the surface water. Water resources include both surface and groundwater, all of them are considered irreplaceable.
And if it feels awkward, we could take out the first sentence and say, the second sentence could be all of Weathersfield's water resources are considered irreplaceable, including groundwater. Cause the one we all thought of when we said Weathersfield Water Resources is. Not groundwater, I mean, yeah, so if you want, I mean, that, I'll just be a little bit humorous.
You said you needed a time code.
Yeah, no, I we're not, we're getting there though.
It's on Hank's list.
No, it's not.
You said this was your baby now.
No, I didn't, I said I would look it over once and hope all my edits were taken and we can move on.
Howard, do you have anything for it?
And uh if Mike can get this this Crown Point Road language done, then we won't have to do any homework. But maybe we should just move on.
Well, if we still have any other business that can legally be discussed, then we can come down on that for. So um I'm gonna say we can move on, it's as the rest of the board is okay with that.
Are you close, Mike?
I think we should give him another favor stack then.
All right, the Crown Point Road is a historic military road dating back to the seventeen hundreds. This road should be protected and maintained according to the Weathersfield Class Four Road Policy Section, whatever that is. Uh maintenance of the Crown Point Road, because of its special nature, the select board should consider should carefully consider landowner participation. In maintaining Crown Point Road. That if this is the town plan, it gives the direction of the select board about the policy that they write and how and and the things they should consider within that. And there you go. Could mean, because you don't, you don't actually, you don't actually put the 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 policy here, the.
But then we can change the policy later, I love it.
The Crown Point Road is a historic military road dating back in the seventeen hundreds. This road should be protected and maintained according to the Weathersfield Class Four Road Policy Section Number, I don't know what that is. Uh maintenance of the Crown Point Road, because of its special nature, the select board, she can. Carefully consider landowner participation in maintaining the Crown Point Road.
Done.
Yeah.
It's a direction to the Crown Point or to the select board about. The policies to do this, for anybody that doesn't know, Crown Point Road was um. From four number four to um. Yeah, yeah, or Tacon Roman, I think it was, um, right, is that right, uh uh Tacon Roman? Yeah, that's what I thought, Julie, thank you, um, and and that was, that road was before we became a country. It's 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 that old. Uh but but unfortunately, there is another point to this and that is that through through the uh uh ancient roads policy is their ancient roads law that was. I think it was like one seventy-one, one seventy-four, something like that, I think one seventy-seven, one seventy-eight, um, anyway, um. Unfortunately, Springfield and Cavendish did nothing. Uh we're the only ones that did anything with this thing, so. Most of the, what it was, was most of this road was in deeds. Um and there was legislation that was written that would make them go away, I believe it was in twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen. If you didn't adopt them, they ceased to exist because they were popping up in deed searches and land transfers and stuff and causing problems. So that was the purpose, I think, of the the legislation that was written and 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 the ancient roads process began here. Uh DeForest was a big part of it, um. And uh anyway, yeah, uh it was, uh we felt it was important to keep the road because it's very stored danger, but. Sometimes we might have more to me too, I guess.
Well, we have good language to add into the plan now, and that's why we have these discussions. And whoops, second vice. Uh moving on to item number ten, discussion of items for future agendas. So we all have been given our homework assignments for chapters on the town plan, we're gonna start working on those. On the next meeting, what would be our.
Meeting. I did my chapter, man, someone was did the homework.
I do.
On me, I do, am I gonna do another one of these?
Wow, I didn't say two.
Yeah, I have two.
So um how would be the best way of going through and doing this, so we can just do a very high level overview of it or Brian?
So uh I'm struggling to get information because it's just not me rewriting and it's me talking to certain departments in town trying to get things. My objective is to try to have something ready to go by. Uh two weeks, a week from Thursday, but that may or may not be true, okay, it all depends on the feedback I get, if I don't get any feedback. I think I'm just gonna push it through and and we'll just keep moving.
We'll say more, sort of wait for emails back when you stay, because you can't, there's not anybody very following.
Well, the same thing with the, uh, stop the town plan, the God was.
I'm tied up writing zoning bylaws, so. Need time.
We need a plan to write the bylaws.
We'll just wait and see what surfaces in a week or Thursday, and that's the agenda.
I'll have some changes on the land use chapter and some of the more, I guess, broad things that Jason had brought up. Uh that might be covered in another chapter.
And I'll have stuff for education ready.
Which one did I get?
Transportation.
And I might have the driveway and bylaw ready too.
Okay, get me work on this, but.
And then um after, well, I went through and listened to the meeting where we were discussing housing economic chapters. Um there's a lot of stuff that we're probably gonna wanna rehash over again on that one, so I would almost give those two chapters. Their own meeting on it. Cause there's gonna be a lot now.
How much, how much is that one gonna change based on the earlier discussion about the future land use map?
Maybe not at all, if they don't say anything.
Okay. I'm good with that.
I mean, we can always cross their fingers, right?
I I think the the main thing that they're saying we need to include in the housing chapter is the targets that they sort of provided, but. I don't think that there's all that much specifically that they said that.
So we could just use their numbers and move on, so.
I haven't, I haven't.
We should. Make sure it very clear that those numbers were given to us, that we didn't make them up, but I'm sure that's everyone here's opinion.
Yeah.
Any other business that can legally be.
Yeah, are you gonna make sure that gets in this chapter with Ryan, or should you wanna give me that and I'll do it?
Either way, you want it?
No, I don't, I was hoping you would, but I'm.
It's your turn.
Turn it all day. If if you can read my chicken scratches.
That's better than mine.
Are you a Rosetta Stone?
You can take that.
No, no. Yeah, I'm gonna. This I'm hopefully not gonna lose.
Well, take that with you too.
No signature, though, it's not with anything.
Enter take a motion for adjournments, pause, damn it, by three minutes.
Aye.
Uh Howard made the motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh any opposed? And no extensions.
Wow, that was fun today.
Eight thirty-four.
You were up quiet tonight. Well, I don't know, I I don't, yeah, as I say, I don't know what.